Okay, I will call to order the April 6th, City of Columbia and a city council meeting. And I will ask that Deanne will give us the invocation and I will give the pledge of allegiance. Deanne?
Lord, we ask your blessing on our community and on our world during this time. Be with our leaders as they guide us and make decisions to keep our citizens safe. Give them the wisdom and knowledge they need during this time. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Deanne, will you call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane? Liston?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay, we'll give McBane a minute. I see him on the screen now. As soon as he can get himself unmuted, I can call his name again. McBane, whenever you're ready to answer.
I'm ready.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. First, we're gonna have reading of communications. I do not have the letter from Donna Schluter with the little clippers. Does anyone have that letter?
One second, Rick.
Okay.
I have mine here if you'd like me to read it.
Would you do that, please? Thank you.
I'm writing to request tag day to be added to the agenda for the monthly meeting. The Columbia and Little Clippers would like to request to have a tag day on Saturday, August 7th. Signed by Donna Schluter.
Okay, thank you. We'll deal with that matter later in the agenda. Also, Deanne, do you have the letter of Robert Kroski?
I'll search for that one. Yes, I do. My name is Robert Kroski. June is Responsible Fatherhood Month, and I would like to commemorate it by organizing an event tentatively called the Columbia Fathers' Day Eve Stroll. Per the flyer draft I have attached, proposal is to initiate this event near the clock tower at the downtown square at approximately 1:00 PM on June 19th. Then head up North Main Street utilizing the east sidewalk to Route 14 without crossing over it and then head back to where I started. While in progress, I intend on handing out silicon bracelets to anyone who wants one that read Responsible Father. I will also carry and distribute to participants homemade signs that include, but are not limited to, the following statements. Be a responsible father and honk if you support responsible fathers. I would not anticipate this event taking any longer than one and a half hours. If approved, I would attempt to promote it via local media outlets, social media, signs placed around town if given permission by the property owner, and by going door to door, dropping off the flyer. If door to door distribution is a violation of any local ordinance, please let me know. I thank you for considering my request. I can assure you that all applicable COVID-19 guidelines will be complied with. Contact me if you have any questions, signed by Robert Kroski, and then he leaves his phone number.
Thank you very much, Deanne. Next, we have reports of commissions and boards. We have the Park and Cemetery Board meeting minutes of March 22nd, 2021. A minute from the mail. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes?
Excuse me, Rick.
Yes.
Back up on approving of the minutes.
You are, okay. You are correct.
Yeah, I believe we did skip approving city council minutes.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, we have the, you received copies of the March 16th, 2021 minutes of the council. Were there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as presented. Okay. Now we'll go back to Parkland Recreation and Cemetery Board meeting minutes of March 22nd, 2021. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes?
I actually did have a question on the, what is it, the softball field project? Has that been presented to the park board or the council for approval? I haven't seen anything on that.
I think Ron will cover that here in a couple of minutes.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, other than those, that question, I will now move to the recognition of persons desiring to appear. And first is Ron Datwaller, Park Recreation Cemetery Board President, to discuss updates on the Phase 2 project at Firestone Park. Ron?
Thanks, Rick. My role tonight, I'd like to go over the current projects we have going on in the park right now. Give you a short update on each of them and then answer questions you might have. Currently, we have eight projects in process in Firestone Park, and we have two more that will be commencing later on this summer. So, we have our hands full, to say the least. First project that is virtually completed is the sports court. That's part of Phase 1 of Tara and R and B's project. The project is complete except for painting of the lines on the courts, the pickleball courts, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, and also putting the nets up. And it's, we've been told that they can't do that painting until they have so many days of warm weather or appropriate weather to complete the task. So, sports courts are done, but will be in use very, very shortly. Probably what's taking the most of our time right now is the opening of the pool. I'm gonna have a little help tonight. I'm gonna call on Terry to go over some things as far as opening Firestone Pool. We're going through the same procedure this year that we did last year. We have every anticipation of opening the pool on Saturday, May the 20th. And obviously, we're working with the CDC guidelines and the county health department. But I'm gonna let Terry go over some of those things with you now and also talk about pavilion rentals.
Right now, like Ron said, we're shooting for May 29th opening. This April 26th, the next park board meeting, we're gonna decide, park board and myself, and hopefully Lance too, on pricing, what we're gonna do, if we're gonna have passes, etc., you know, if we're gonna open it to everyone or keep it. No, we know we're not gonna be coming into residence again. We're gonna plan from that. We just don't know how far we're gonna go here. Right now, as far as pavilion rentals, we haven't rented anything this year yet. And within the next week or so, we have to decide about May. The wine keeps opening up stuff, everything outside from parades and fairs and that kind of stuff, but it's still 25% inside. And since nothing is governed in the pavilions that we rent, it can seat 120. If we say you can only have 50 people in there, what guarantees they're gonna keep it? We're still under a, we have a lot of talking to do in the next week to do about those. Lifeguards and the part-time summer help have been hired, drug tested. The swimming suits are ordered, the paint's ordered for the pool. So, we're in like that. If you have seen the outside of the pool, the new roof and the stuck outside, it's looking very, 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 very nice. Been getting a lot of work done up there. It looks great. Appreciate all that from R and B and that wall and everything. So, right now, we're just kinda waiting to see each week what we can do and what we can't do as far as the pool. So, we're kinda like still in a waiting game a little bit, but a lot better than last year.
Our plan is, at the end of our discussion and prior to opening, to come out with a list, if you will, like we did last year, after working with CDC and the health department of the changes from what has been the norm prior to COVID. So, we will have that literature out prior to the opening. And this is an ongoing discussion both at park board and we'll keep council informed as we go along. But as Terry said, the anticipated opening date is on schedule for May 29th, Saturday, May. The other project that is virtually completed, Terry touched on it, is the pool house. I'm sure you've all been up through there and see the renovations. That was broken down into Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1's exterior, Phase 2 is interior. Phase 1 is completed for all intents and purposes. There's still some fencing that needs to be done. And the canvas and the brand up for the observation deck has to be completed. And there's a few construction things that need to be repaired. But other than that, we're very pleased with how that project went. And Phase 1 should be completed before that opening date of the pool. Another project that we're resurrecting again this year is Concerts in the Park. As you know, last year, we had to cancel the entire season. We kept pushing it off, pushing it off, hoping things would change. They didn't. So, the whole Concerts in the Park series was canceled. We're bringing it back this year in anticipated form of pre-COVID. Greg Gustafson is the chairman again. He's been chairman for many, many years. He has the concerts started to be booked already. And so, we're hoping to bring that back to its original state. The only issue may be how Phase 2 of Tara's project goes. And part of that project's parking lot, so we're concerned about that. But as of this moment, Concerts in the Park is planned to go on just like it has in the past. The biggie right now too is Phase 2 of Tara's programming. I'm sure all of you saw Lance's smiling face on the news tonight. And you've read everything about Phase 2 that Pat Tingle's put out. And that is already begun, Phase 2. Part of that project is the parking lot. If you've been through the pool area, there is no parking lot there now. And so, the contractors, after meeting with them for their construction meetings, they know that having that parking lot is first priority. And they have said, if weather permitting, they'll have that parking lot open prior to the May 29th opening of the pool. As all of you know, with construction, you never know exactly what's gonna happen. But we've also discussed the item that if a full parking lot isn't there, at least a half of one will be. So, that's gonna be a big question for us and we're working with it. And that's the first phase of, or Phase 2, that's the first part of it, the parking lot and the sidewalk. Now, so we can open the pool. Just as an aside, you know, a couple of our catch points through this programming with the bricks in the parks for the gutters. Those bricks were lining that parking lot at the pool. And they, in the past, they were covered up and smoothed out and the bushes were taken out. We did resurrect all those bricks and they're being stored down at the water department. So, I don't want anybody to think we're catching those bricks. They're being saved for future gutter work in the park. Next, what I'm going to do, and again, if you've read the newspaper and listened to what's going on right now in the park, you know that one of the projects that we're working on right now is the dog park. One of your council members is part of that committee and has offered a very unique challenge to the community. So, I would like to have Dick take over at this point in time and sort of update us on the dog park and give them a little bit more detail on what's planning there in that funding stage.
He's muted.
You're muted, Dick.
You're muted, Dick.
Yeah. Right now, we're in the fundraising stages. We have, at the moment, we're up to $17,150 collected through the GoFundMe page. That's probably our highest priority right now because there's not really much we can do until we generate enough funds to actually get things moving and get things going. We've talked a little bit about the location. It's located in the, what I call the southern loop of the walking trails. And there is a sign up now that shows what's there. There's a lot of literature that we're putting together to try to solicit more funds to get more people in the community to help donate. And I suppose most of you've heard, I've offered to match up to $20,000 in all donations that are made in the month of April. So, hopefully, that'll kick things off and we'll start seeing things come in a little bit faster than what they have so far. I think that's pretty much it at this point. The fundraising is the major piece of work we're doing right now.
What's your goal, Dick?
Goal for the, for the entire project, it's estimated at $80,000 right now. If we were able to collect more than $80,000, we might be able to make it a little bit bigger than the one acre they're currently proposing. I think there's more than one acre that could be available in that loop. But we're also gonna have to deal with clearing out a lot of brush and dead wood and even potentially some dead trees and things like that that keep losing limbs. And I know the park spends a lot of time cutting things up after a big storm.
Dick, the last time we talked, location was still a question. Is that pretty well been settled now?
No. I was contacted today and the other location that we were suggesting, the people that are involved in that project are willing to talk to us. They do not wanna sell. But they would be interested in having us sit down and speak with them about what we were willing to do and what we were willing to offer. And I was gonna talk to Lance and yourself about that privately afterwards, but since you asked, I think it's, I think we at least should look into it because it could save considerable money in cleaning up the area, you know, the deadfall and everything in that one area in the park.
Okay.
The other thing that would be nice about it is that leaves a lot of habitat for a lot of animal life that, you know, is something that we're losing more and more of in the areas. The heavy construction on homes and everything are going on on areas such as Terra Verde and other places in town.
I know we're being somewhat sketchy as far as this location situation. But the only thing I'll add there, you talk about coming full circle. All of the work that we did, attorney Hudson, the Firestones, the Firestones attorney, as far as language with facilities in the park, is coming full circle now. And we may be able to even use some of that language to help us out in this particular situation. So, that's real heartening when those things happen. We'll keep you posted on that. Dog park is strictly in the funding stage. Lance is also involved with that, Dick. So, you'll be well informed on that one. Another project that is in its infancy stages is Earl Softball Stadium. To answer your question from earlier, no, that hasn't been presented to park board yet in its entirety nor council. But they know that it has to be. We've had a donor come forward with a very large donation to redo one of the girls softball stadium down by the tennis courts in that area. Again, this is in the pending states. There's some question as far as architects and plans. HRG did come up with plans for their softball stadium. But now, the donor thinks that he might wanna do his own plans. So, we're still working with that. And they know the procedure. It's gonna be run like any other project in the park. We'll keep you posted on it. And yes, they know they have to come to council for that approval after they've come to park board. So, we'll keep you posted on that. But another large donation, it's gonna be a gigantic improvement to the park. We're very pleased with it. Another project that's in its infancy stages is the high school football stadium. As you know, with what the work we did with the Firestones, those facilities have been turned over to the high school. Currently, there's a committee that's been put together to study the high school, putting together a new high school football stadium. We've had a donor, another donor come forward to work with this project. This is a school committee. And the chairman of this committee is Dr. Mulch, the superintendent. They've met two or three times since the first of the year. Obviously, funding's a big issue. Also, there's other parts to the program as far as how you go about putting a new stadium in there and matching the decor of the park. But we'll keep you informed on that as time goes on also. One thing I wanted to touch on very briefly, and it's probably out of place to do that. But we've had a couple of issues with, not vandalism, but little mischief in the park. And I wanted you to be aware of that as far as, we had some individuals try to throw some of the stones in the water last week, some of the greedy and things like that. Typically, what we've done with the park through the years is sort of downplay those kind of issues. And sometimes little things turn into big things. But I did want council to know that as we keep making improvements, doing new projects, this is something that park board's been discussing. Is it going to be a problem for us in the past and in the future? So, we will keep you informed on that also as time goes on. One other project that will be starting this summer or at the end of the R and B's project. Phase 2, by the way, that has just been begun, they've got a very ambitious completion date of September. And at that time, they're the group at Erdfish is putting together a disc golf course. They've already worked with R and B and also have plans through HRG. So, that's another project that will be surfacing in the future. Get any questions on that? That's this goal. One last thing. Let me, any questions on any of the projects that I went over? Great. Last thing. And Lance, I don't know if you wanna touch on this instead of me. I mean, I've probably stolen your whole apartment or manager's report. One thing I'd like to do that I think we've done enough, we received a letter from Pat Tingle.
I got that covered. I got it covered.
You got that covered? Okay. Let me wrap up then by saying, we have so much going on in the park. And we are just beyond appreciative of everything that's going on. And so, therefore, often we forget to thank the appropriate people and give proper recognition with so many things going on. And let me say this. I mean, we can't thank the Restoration and Beautification Committee enough for all the work that they are doing. So, I'd officially like to go on council's minutes as thanking them, Pat Tingle, the Restoration and Beautification Committee, for all the work that they're doing, have done and they're continuing to do. That's it. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, Ron. Appreciate it and appreciate all the work you're doing. And so, we'll look forward to seeing where the, where the whole thing ends up. Should be interesting. Next, we have Brayden Tucker with Dying Breeds Diesel to discuss an event to be held October 2nd in the city. Brayden? You can unmute and talk to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're, as you know, we've had two events in the city on South Main Street. Dying Breed Diesel is what we like to call the family reunion. It's based off of our Facebook page, which we are now at 153,000 members. I think it's probably about the size of Youngstown and Canton combined. But they know where our home, refer to Columbia as our home because you guys have been so gracious to let us have our annual event there. And we're just asking permission to do it again, October 2nd. Hopefully, with the hours of 2 to 7. That's one request I've had from a lot of people that's attended is we're not there long enough. They wanna be in Columbia a little bit longer and I don't blame them. And normally, we have the beneficiary that we take donations for, raise funds. And after being inspired the last couple of days with the article with Mr. McBane, we'd like to, if possible, raise funds and contribute to the dog park.
Very nice. Anything else for us tonight?
Not tonight. If it's okay, I'll reach out to the police office or the city police and get those assistance that we've had in the past. They've been very gracious helping us with the traffic flow and everything. My biggest concern, I just want safety. And I know we leave at nighttime with the light show and all that. That's a great event. I just, everybody keeps their eyes peeled, especially with children. I just don't want anything wrong on our watch. But everybody keeps a cool head and the drivers cooperate the way that they should. And I expect them to. It should be a nice, safe event for everybody.
Very good. Just as a point of clarification, have we approved this October 2nd date? Has council officially approved that yet?
No.
So, we probably need to add that under new business. Can you say 2 to 7, Brayden?
Yes, sir.
2 to 7. Okay, we'll entertain a motion during new business for that. And I'd just like to say, we appreciate Brayden, all the words you put out about the city of Columbia. We really appreciate your support and we love to have you in town. And you're a great asset to this community and we really thank you for everything. So, thank you very much.
Bowing us to be.
Okay, are there any questions for Brayden? How many trucks do you think you'll have this year?
Boy, that's a good question. I really don't know. I know guys are, they have a, really wanna scratch, being with, everything was off last year with COVID. Last, last time, we had 106 trucks. We really need to. Possibly Lance and I get together and I'll bribe him with coffee and maybe take a look at maybe. Ways that we can expand a little bit. Have the same party from Missouri that's interested in coming back and bringing more people with them because they were so impressed with. And that's that's humbly. That's that's great. But to answer your question, I it's hard to say. I mean. There could be a dozen or it could be a hundred and fifty. I really don't know.
I don't know, Brayden, if it keeps growing, we're gonna have to extend Main Street.
The town. I've been looking to see where it can get.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to turn to the manager's report. Lance, could you present that for us, please?
Sure. Thank you, Rick. So at the last meeting, I had mentioned that the. Our gas aggregation program supplier had to go out the market for gas in February and chosen the past all those costs to us. We worked with our gas aggregation program to object to their practices. Citing our original contract with them. And we found out this week that our efforts to reverse those charges were successful. So we're pretty excited about that. The company has acknowledged our correspondence by saying they will make the corrections. We're just not real clear how they're going to make those. You know, those adjustments, but I'll let you know as that occurs. So. Basically, they charge us a higher rate for a few days during that month. And they're going to. Abide by the contract, which was a fixed rate. And, you know, actually. Our residents will get money back one way or another on their account. So we, you know. We appreciate all the help that the gas aggregation program, you know, where there's powers and numbers. And we jumped right on it and we're able to get a pretty, pretty good results pretty quick. So. That was good. The Salem Street Stormwater FEMA project that we've been talking about for a few years now should should be going out to bid on Thursday. We're going to put that in advertising on Thursday. I believe we'll end up. I believe we're going to end up opening the the bids on April 29th. And as I said last meeting, we are going to be working with the county since there's CDPG funds in there. Mark Hudson and I have been working with them to do that. They are going to be a part, but they're going to really let us drive the boat now. So that's that's great. And. That project will be wrapped up by the end of this year. So we do have a lot of work to do. It's a $2.2 million project. But as long as we get out the bits soon, we should be able to get that taken care of. For the the 2020 CRE report was submitted. Let's see, I'll jump around here a little bit. The progress committee met with the entrepreneurial class. To clarify various parts of that project. Now that class is graduating in May. So we we've put a push on to get some, get some action items completed. And we hope to do that. And at the end of this meeting during during council comments. I may show you a couple of renderings of that. But typically, in the middle of the meeting, I don't try to color outside the lines and and. Make the technology any more difficult than it already is. So. And I and I do appreciate your patience today with the the internet being down. That's what we have backup plans for and we, you know. You know, just had to take action. I'm kind of glad it happened before we started the meeting because I think that would have made it a little bit worse. So. The Youngstown Business Journal interviewed the entrepreneurial class. I'll share that article with you when I when I see it. I have a feeling it's coming out anytime. It may even came out today. They were very interested in that project. And again, the entrepreneur class has been doing this work for years. And Tricia Miso has been doing a great job with these young adults. That, you know, really think outside the box. They've helped a lot of businesses over the years. They'll they'll go in inside of a restaurant, for example, and work with their POS system, work with their. With their menu system and just rework it. And 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 actually, you know, interview their their customers to see what what they can do to improve it. And we're really glad that they they, you know, working with us on that alley. To give you a update on the. We started digitizing City Hall and that's going pretty well. So we backlog. The last seven years of records that we needed to do. Into the system. And now we're moving forward and we're getting scanners to do some of that work. Now, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna scan something that's already in the system. You wouldn't want to do that. You know, you won't want to do something. That you don't have to do. These these reports and such are in the system, and we're going to make sure they're in the system for years to come. We did place legislation on agenda tonight for the ODOT salt contract. As many of you remember. A lot of times we get this at the last second. I'm calling you to home and telling you we're putting on an emergency. We were able to get this one in time for two readings. So the first reading will be tonight. And second reading will be on the 20th. And then we'll we have till the end of the month. So we were we were happy that we we got that a little early this time. The asphalt bids came in and those are on the legislation. On your agenda. You know, when we pass resolutions, we we we, you know, sign the documentation afterwards and Mark found it. That the original resolution that we did pass last meeting had an error in it. In the pursuant to where as clause. So we put a resolution to amend that original. Just for so years to come, when somebody looks back, they can they can see, and it's just cleaning it up. It was a section 126210 A and B, and it needs to be 126212 A and C. So that was a good catch, Mark. Mike and I have been preparing for a presentation for the bomb rating rating agency that we did the refinance. So we're going to pitch our case to the. To the bombing agency and and hopefully our our so. In other words, in general purposes, it's like a credit score. And there's a lot to lot to do with that. We actually have a slide presentation that we're working through. And they want to know, you know, they're not from around here. They want to know about Columbia. So we're going to tell them. We're going to tell them about Columbia. Let's see, the proposed county line sewer sewer project that we talked about in planning commission, the last meeting. I believe that's, I think that's going to be coming to council next meeting. That is a. It's driven by the the property owners. And we happen to be property owners, but what we do is we our vote goes with a majority. And we voted. Last week and to move forward with that project. And that project will occur in 2021. It will become a city project. And then those landowners. That are participating will will pay for that project over 20 years on their taxes if they do. If they if they choose to do so, or they could pay cash upfront. Everybody knows right now what they what they're gonna owe. And they're, you know, a lot of people, you know, really want the sewer out there. So. Was involved on a. An R cap video today. We were asked to talk about Columbia and their water, specifically water. And a little bit of wastewater. So that was that was pretty neat. You can see my office has changed a little bit. They made some requests. So I actually had to change my office for them. They said it was a little boring before. Our cap provided us with an opportunity to attend the Main Street Mall Conference. So back in 2019, we learned a lot at that conference, and we hope to learn a lot more of this conference. Let's see, street department, Jesse and Chief Myers were asked to attend a railroad crossing meeting last week. We'll keep you informed as that progresses. They're Jesse and the street are. Heavily involved in the phase two R and B parking lot project. And some of the trucking and such on that project. Water Department, they're working on the completing the consumer confidence report. And they repaired several metering systems at the plant. And we're also, you know, last year we looked at. We did a leak detection test throughout the year. It was, I think it started in late August. It lasted for maybe 35 days. We're going to look at a system monitoring plan. For 2021, we'll have a company come in and do something similar, but they'll be monitoring the system itself and pressures and things. We we try to do those once every five years or so. Wastewater Department, we've got a down unit right now. We've got to order some parts. And hope to get those, that unit back online. Park and Cemetery Park, I mean. So many projects. I've never spent so much time out there at the park. It's 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 been great to watch. You know, so many projects going on, and we need a day planner just for the meetings for the park park projects. And again, thank you to the R and B and Pat Tingle for everything they did. I know that Ron Ron talked about that. You know, we do have all those things that they did for us last year, and I did acknowledge that. I actually wrote them a thank you letter this this last week. Electric Department, they're working on a large fiber improvement project for the city. And we are hoping. In 2021, that we're going to beef up our. Our internet. And 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 have some backup systems. So that may be relevant. It was very pertinent to tonight. But we're, you know, we have. We have a system in place. We have firewalls in place, but we're going to try to come up with a like two carriers. And we're going to be able to do that with some city owned fiber. And Doug is working on that. Tonight, you have on legislation, a notice from liquor control. This is much like the last couple that we did, and this is doing businesses, Riser Tavern. That just came on Saturday. I know they're, I'm pretty sure they're coming to planning commission next. Next Tuesday. So but I wanted to kind of get this out of the way. So I went ahead and put that on yesterday. And appreciate your patience for doing that. And I think that is my report. Again, if we get in the council comments and everything's going well, I'll share you a little bit of what the kids have provided us with. On the Mulberry Alley. They do have a new name for it called the Columbia Corridor. And again, they're very active and, you know, we hope to get some 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 things done with that. And that's that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. For some reason, I have lost my video. I assume you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, we can see you and hear you.
Okay, well, I just can't see you. Be aware of that. I'll just mention that. We have the. Bid open results. For asphalt 2021. Did you comment on that, Lance, is there?
Yeah, that's that's a company that we we've dealt with in the past. It's usually one of two carriers and. We're very happy with that bid.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, I want to mention that we have a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Regarding. The D. Fifty one license for 1135 Reserve LLC doing businesses. Doing business as Riser Tavern and Grill at 105 St. Andrews Drive in Columbia, Ohio. I think you've received that information in the packet. Our normal procedure is to. Make a motion to request a hearing. So I guess at this point is. I believe we need to do that, and our normal procedure has been to vote up on that motion. So we have a motion to that effect.
I'll move that we request a a meeting at at our county seat for hearing.
And there is a second. Okay.
Who made the second?
Sour.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? You call the roll, Dan.
Okay, so if you do not want a hearing, your vote needs to be no. Becker?
No.
Souter?
No.
McBain?
No.
Liston?
No.
Attilio? You're muted, Dan.
Sorry, no.
Banner?
No.
Okay. Okay, the motion failed. Okay, so. Are you hearing me now?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Okay.
You're here twice.
Okay. So in your package, you have the bill list, the 462021. Any questions or comments in the bell list? Hearing none. That'll be accepted. We don't have any more business. So I'll move to new business and request a motion to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So move.
Second.
Backup.
Okay. And could you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. We have resolution number 21. R dash 568. First reading. A resolution amending resolution number 21 dash R dash 563.
Tell me.
Second.
Motion second. Dan?
McBain?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
I'm staying.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay. The motion's approved. Ordinance number 21 dash O. Dash 3074. First reading. An ordinance authorizing participation. And ODOT cooperative purchasing program for winter contract. Zero one eight dash zero two one for sodium chloride, rock salt.
Tell me.
Damn, I mean, well.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 21 dash O dash 3075. First reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the County Asphalt Materials Incorporated. P O Box 338, North Line, Ohio. Four 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 five two. For the purchase of asphalt. I have a question. Wait for a motion and second. Is our motion?
I made a motion.
Souter moved.
Second. Okay, now, Skip. When you, when you read that, you said the county asphalt materials, it's tried. Does that make any difference? Do we care? When you when you read that, you said the county asphalt materials, it's tried. Does that make any difference? Do we care?
So corrected.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dan?
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the request from Little Clippers to hold Tag Day on August seventh, twenty twenty-one in the city.
So moved.
Second.
There's motion second, Dan?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the request from Robert Klosky requesting permission to hold a Columbiana Father's Day stroll event at the Town Circle at one P M on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Dan? I have a question. I think when Dan read the letter from them, it gave, they said signs like and he gave two examples of a sign, but indicated there could be other signs. I would like to add something that says that the signs have to be approved by the city. Whatever they say, something to, just something to cover the city that they're not going to walk around with a sign that says something that we don't want them to say, that's all. I don't think they will.
Their letter did say the signs include but not be limited to the following statements, be a responsible father and honk if you support responsible fathers is how it's worded.
I don't know that that would be inappropriate. Frankly, it sounds kind of unconstitutional to me to create that kind of an exclusion.
Well, how how are we going to protect the city from them walking around saying things that we don't want them to say?
So back in in twenty twenty sixteen, we had to work with I believe it was Tony Blaisdell about the, you know, information on signs. And we, they have to be, you know, we have to treat them as content neutral, no matter what a sign is. So it's it's, you know, it's a free speech thing. I think Mark Mark is on the line. Probably won't, don't want to get into the weeds too much, but you know, I I don't know that we can, we can ask them to do that either.
Okay, that that answers my question. I just.
Just to chime in, the only thing I'd say is yes, I agree with what Lance is saying. You know, we really can't get too far into it, although we would like to to make sure what the signs say. We just have to hope that whoever is doing this uses good taste as far as the signs go. But if we were to start trying to restrict or approve, I would agree with Lance. We're really, we're on a on thin ice. Sorry.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't want to see any signs in there that we don't want to see, but it just, it kind of comes into that thing. I mean, I I would be perfectly cool with saying, you know, please keep it clean, obviously.
Right.
But any going beyond and restricting, I think we don't think we could do that, so.
Maybe this is just, you know, going further, but and maybe Mark wants to chime in, but where is the city approval really required if it's just, what if this is just a group of people gathering together? You know, a community type thing? What if it's some service project type thing? They're not really asking for police support or anything like that. So what is our requirement as a city in terms of any approval at all?
I think that we've tried to, like in the past, give our blessing to things like this when asked. But as far as a requirement, if they're not asking for law enforcement, you know, police protection or anything, they're not wanting to use the streets. It it's kind of like a group of people decide to walk up and down Main Street with signs saying Happy Father's Day. We don't really have any, you know, we don't really have any stake in it. And again, I think we're really, we've got to be real careful how we get involved in something like this. Or if we get involved in something like this.
So do we have a motion on the table? Now I've lost track.
Yes, we have a motion.
Yeah, you do.
We did.
I I'd like to move to amend the motion to give the city's blessing, but not necessarily approval to the event.
It's our second. What? Here, here, you know, second, I think the.
Yeah, the motion dies, that's fine.
Amendment dies.
The amendment dies. Well, can we, could we, taking off what Dan said, can we just?
We could vote no and then just give it.
We don't, we don't have any approval of it.
Yeah, so.
Right. I mean, I know that when we talked about the Dog Park fundraiser, I know that's on private property, but there was nothing that required our approval. It's not private property, but here this is public streets. You know, they're not asking for assistance. They're not asking to block anything off. So I feel I'm hesitant to say it's approved because then it's almost as if the city is supporting it. And that just raises concerns for me.
How about?
I would not disagree with what Amanda said, just from the standpoint that again, you want to be careful what you're approving or even does it look like we're condoning it? I I think that's where if we take no action, you might be safer.
Okay, about I move to table the motion.
Her second.
We're going to have to do something with it, so.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could amend it to say something where we advise them that their what they have requested does not require city approval. Yeah, if we table the motion, then just just, you know, it's it doesn't require approval. So we don't have to vote no, which would be denying approval. We just simply say that it doesn't require approval. We table the motion.
Or you could just withdraw the motion in the second and just take no action.
If someone has a public gathering, do they need a permit?
Can anybody answer that?
Is it actually a public gathering if a group of people walk up and down the street? Without doing a little bit of research into what constitutes a public gathering? Or if anything does, I'm a little hesitant to say, well, if you have five people or ten people or you know, I I think the thing about something like this is we can't tell someone what a sign can say. And just so you, you know, understand, I a few years ago, we were able to, now we can't. That's change in the law, but that's from the U S Supreme Court. So when you get into, you know, regulating anything, if we start issuing permits, you know, what are we going to be doing if we permit it? You know, if we issue a permit for something like this, what's the permit mean? We condone it?
It was just a question, Mark.
Yeah, I know. I Dan, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I really am not trying to be difficult. It's just, this is a tough. It's a tough issue.
I I guess the question is, do we have anything in code that requires permits for gatherings? Beyond beyond something that would be, you know, require support of of city resources. I don't think we do.
No, it's if we require city resources, then we have a stake in it.
So. Yeah, I I think Dan's suggestion is probably the best to just withdraw the motion and and just make it, make it clear that it's not actually, approval is not actually required. Because and and just to add to that, this might be something where in a separate conversation at some point, maybe we need to clarify what does and doesn't require in writing, not necessarily an ordinance, but even a motion, what does and doesn't require approval by the city. We can deal with that later. I just, it's just a suggestion.
I agree.
If we're going to do something like this, then does the city contact them and say there's no approval required? So that they at least know?
Yeah, we'll definitely do that. You know, after this discussion, we'll just say, hey, after looking at it closer, we don't really need, you don't need approval and Rebecca will reach out back, back out to them.
Yeah, thank them for letting us know that they're doing that, but approval's not required.
Well, I think, I think one thing that happens a lot of times, people look at coming to council and talking about something they they plan to do, even though it doesn't require approval, is one way to get it into the newspaper noticed by the citizens that it's going to occur.
Correct.
It could well be, yeah.
And I definitely think we can encourage that. I mean, anytime someone wants to come to council, talk about something they're doing, we should welcome it. And I think we do, so that's not even an issue. But yeah, I think clarifying what's needed for approval or what requires approval would be our next step at some point in the future. That's something we need to do today.
Where do we go from here, Dan?
Okay, so Attilio made the motion and Souter made second. Did those two agree to remove, withdraw their motion in second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion withdrawn.
Okay, the motion withdrawn. I would entertain a motion to approve the dying breeds diesel event October second, two to seven P M.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Dan, call the roll.
Becker?
I did not hear.
Becker, the motion is to.
I've got that. I wasn't sure it was me. Yes.
Yes, yes, it is. Thank you. Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Man, buddy, yes.
Attilio?
Definitely a yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's approved. You're on the go, Brayden.
All right, Brayden, make some noise, man.
Hey, Rick, your 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 camera needs adjusted. We can only see your glasses.
Well, I can't see, so.
That's perfect. Well, that's
Now we can see you.
That's why I said something, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no other motions, we'll move to council comments. Well, first, if there's any public, let me make public comments. Any public comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to council comments. Any council comment? Lance, did you want to do something on that presentation?
Yes, I'm going to try to share my screen, which I typically don't do on the fly, but we'll we'll see what happens here.
Can we say goodbye now?
Yeah, probably. Probably be best. At two brute day. Can you see that? Is there a sign there?
All we can see is an email.
Email, okay, we'll try to get rid of that. How about now?
There you go.
There, now we can see it.
So that's what the kids came up or the young adults entrepreneurs came up with as far as you know, designing a sign and Comco Industries has offered to to do that and 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 they're working on that right now. I'm going to try to get one other email up. One second here. Can you see anything?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we can see the rendering now.
Okay, so they, the the class had Town and Country out, that's Gary and Josh Lindhart out. And they wanted, they basically asked them to do a design of what this could look like. So the class met them out there. I believe Skip was out there. He's part of the progress committee. And then they just sent this and 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 what I'm saying is, you know, many times you pay a lot of money for consultants to do things. Look what Town and Country and the entrepreneurial class has done.
That looks great.
Notice the waterfall there on the on the right. We're actually meeting with Lindhart, the Lindharts Thursday morning at seven thirty and we're going to talk about that fountain a little bit more. And as you remember, the Community Foundation gave us twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, I believe, to to move forward on this project. We haven't spent much money, much money on it yet. It's out of those funds. So we think that'll go a long ways. We're going to put, we believe, with with approval from the landlord and in some some agreements that we're going to put some plugs along this wall right here so the people can charge their phones. And, you know, I want to give hats hats off to the to students again in that they found a product that we could buy that was probably twelve hundred dollars. It's a weatherproof stand that you wire up and and you can charge your phones, but they were worried about, you know, how long that was going to last, you know, maybe maybe the the plugs on that aren't going to be good for three years. Maybe they'll change them. So they came up on their own, let's just put some G F C I outlets along through there. So that's pretty cool. We're also going to put some bistro lights up through through here that are going to match the ones downtown. This, you know, so the sign is going in, we're working on the water fountain. And of course, we're going to try to get some furniture done, you know, some some furniture ordered. We're probably going to put a camera either over by the police department or in the back alley there. And then we're also going to put some, they recommended that we put speakers you know, somewhere in here that'll match the XM radio, so. Just pretty, pretty neat working with them and they're they're following up. I mean, they're they're, they've made the phone calls, you know, that we, that Just pretty, pretty neat working with them and they're, they're following up. I mean, they're, they're, um, they've made the phone calls, you know, that we, that, um. That need to be made when you're in the professional, um, realm. You have to make phone calls, you have to get prices, you have to, you know, deal with timelines and, uh. You know, we can't say, say enough, uh, how, how good they, how, how good they've done, so.
Hey, Lance, I'm just gonna throw it here. Um, I know these, these, uh, young people are graduating in, uh, in June or actually May.
Yeah.
I, I'm recommending we invite them to join a committee to see this project through. Uh, obviously not a requirement, but it'd be kind of cool to invite them if they want to, to, you know, to continue to work with us past the end of the school year.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, yeah, I think a few of them definitely will. I mean, there's a, you know, you can definitely see the leaders in that group and. And, uh, you know, much of this class is graduating. Uh, I believe there's one junior, but, um. Trish told us they have another class next fall, and we, we hope to, um, you know, roll out another project for them to help on, help us out on. But yeah, I'll bring that up, yeah.
So Lance, the rendering that showed the furniture and such, is that covered in the money that's been provided?
We don't have prices on the furniture right now. Our top things are geo-tag. These are, so they, they prioritized, uh, top ten, ten items and, um. The, the, the sign is, you know, number one, we did get the, uh, the charging stations in there, we're getting the music in there, we're getting the bistro lights in there. We hope to get the water fountain in there, and of course, we are gonna need some type of furniture, but we haven't got the quotes back that the, uh, the students have reached out. To, uh, various vendors, they're gonna get it back to us. One of the vendors said it was gonna be till July or August. You know, because of the supplies, because of COVID, so, uh, we may be, uh, dealing with picnic tables for a while, we're not sure. But, uh, we hope to incorporate this Colombian corridor in, you know, the events that do occur downtown. You know, whether it's street fair, you know, you're gonna be able to, they're gonna be able to eat there. Um, whether it's, uh, Dying Breeds Diesels, they'll be able to eat there. And, um, I, I believe that the Chamber of Commerce is gonna have, uh. They're actually, they're meeting right now as we speak about the events that they wanna have, and one of them, uh, i- is a chalk fest. That we did in twenty nineteen. They're gonna try to, uh, revive that, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna turn this alley over to them. So that'll be pretty interesting.
Right presentation, Lance.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments? Council comments?
Actually, one more quick question. Um, I see that, uh, actually more, I guess. Uh, Reed has extended the filing deadline. That applies to Colombian residents as well.
I am assuming that is true. I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay, I just, it's just a question. It's not a big deal. Um, I don't think Reed, it's on Reed's website, so I don't think they're gonna be. Finding anyone if they don't, but I just wasn't sure, even if we were aware of it, I haven't seen anything, so.
Yeah, I, I have not heard yet.
Okay.
But it, it may be pushed out with the, uh, the federal. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they, on their website, it shows May seventeenth now.
Okay.
It'd be hard to follow city before you follow the feds.
You'd have to get them all prepped at the same time, for sure, so, uh, mine's already filed and paid, so I'm done with it, but. I just get taxes over with.
Any other comments? Okay, caring none, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Okay, good. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Good night, all.